Good evening. Welcome to the Township of Abington Board of Commissioners meeting for November 10th, 2016. May I have a roll call, please?
Here.
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 Here. Commissioner Farron is running a little late. After the Pledge of Allegiance, instead of rolling right into our Commissioners' meeting, we're going to have a preliminary budget meeting. So at this time, would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our home.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call on Township Manager Michael Lefebvre for the first reading of the preliminary 2017 municipal budget for Abington Township.
Thank you, President Luker. I would like to provide a brief recap of our discussions through our first two budget work sessions we had. The proposed budget, the general fund budget being presented tonight, is approximately $38 million. It calls for an increase of spending of $554,000 or approximately 1 and 1/2 percent. The general fund budget does not propose any real estate tax increase. The refuse budget is actually a slight decrease of $25,000 or approximately 1 and 1/2 percent and also does not call for any increase in rates. The sewer fund calls for a $286,000 decrease in funding, but unfortunately, we're requesting a modest increase of approximately $12 a household in their sewer bill. The reason we were able to propose a budget without a tax increase was basically because of several factors that worked in our favor. In terms of revenue, there are a number of line items in the budget that we projected an increase in revenue, our market field tax, our income tax, deed transfer tax, and business privilege tax. We're all projecting a $100,000 increase in each of those line items, along with a $40,000 increase in our building permits. At the same time, there are a couple line items on our expense side that we're able to see significant decreases. Our medical benefits are decreasing by approximately $40 million. Our gasoline budget is down $234,000. Continency line item is down $131,000, and pension benefits, $101,000. The combination of the decrease in these major categories along with the increase in revenue more than offset any increase in personnel costs and other operational costs. So therefore, we're very pleased to be in a position to present a balanced budget. There's several new programs as part of the 2017 budget. The township staff has proposed that we move to a insured prescription program. Over the years, we were self-insured, but over the last few years, we're assuming an increased level of risk, particularly with the specialty drugs. As a result, we were able to get a very favorable rate for our prescription program, a fully insured program, and save approximately $250,000. The program calls basically a rate for 2017 and a maximum increase of 15% in 2018. Even if we're faced with the maximum increase in 2018, it's still less than what we would have had a budget in 2017 if we remained self-insured. So that worked out very well for us. The budget also has additional financing, interest costs if the board proceeds with bond issue. There's a proposed bond issue that we'll address in a few minutes. And we add an additional cost of $143,000 to support our fire companies, take some of the financial burden related to insurance costs of the five fire companies to provide some relief in that area. Just want to touch base quickly on the fund balance. The new fund balance program we put into place in 2014 enabled us to add approximately $1.6 million to our permanent improvement fund over the first two years of the program, an additional $1 million to our OPEB program. As a result, the OPEB program, our unfunded liability, was increasing by about $3 million every two years. The fund is, we've obtained an actual evaluation in a two-year cycle, and it was going up about $3 million every two years. This most recent valuation, as a result of the increased funding, we were able to put in that program, allows for the cost containment measures the board put into place, see that that unfunded liability is actually level now. And we hope in the next few years, we begin to see it decreasing. The permanent improvement fund, at the same time, we're projecting a balance of $4.2 million at the end of this year, which is actually about $1 million more than we started when we set up this program two years ago. So it's worked out very well for both programs, having a dedicated funding stream for those issues. Just touching briefly on our capital budget, we're recommending $1.5 million in expenditures, which is a little bit higher in the past, but that contains a $250,000 line item, basically providing grant support for any grants we obtain as the township match next year and hopefully the following year. There's also a potential for a bond issue, which the board has got to make a decision on. That bond issue, as proposed, calls for $3 million in storm run improvements, $1.2 million as our match for core engineer program where we're scheduled to obtain $2 million in federal funds, and also support for the Old York Road EDC project. The proposed bond fund also calls for $1.5 million for our refuse fund, and there is financing in both of those budgets contained in the proposed 2017 budget. As to the sewer budget, you can see from the graph, spending has been very level. Basically, we're at the same point in spending as we were in 2009, but unfortunately, because revenues have decreased, we're recommending a slight increase of 3.8% next year, which equates about $12 to the average household. I should point out, this is the first increase being proposed since the year 2011. And that's my brief recap. Any questions to the board, I'm happy to address at this time.
Any comments or questions from Commissioners? Stephen Klein, Commissioner, Vice President.
I just want to take the time to thank all the staff, including Michael and Kevin especially, working on the budget. Last year, we went through a difficult budget, but we also got the point across that we wanted to try to contain spending, fail-safe the fund balance in our capital programs, and make sure that we continue to put money away so that we can continue to work on those things. And I appreciate all the work of all the department heads, and I think we're moving in the right direction. I'm glad we made decisions that we did last year to contain costs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good comment. Thank you. Any other comments or questions from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any from the public? All right.
The board has a number of motions now they need to make related to the preliminary budget, and if there's any questions, any of those motions, as we walk through them, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
So we do have to make a motion?
Yes, we do.
Is a motion on the floor then to be made by Vice President Klein?
So for the general fund, they can make a motion to adopt the preliminary general fund revenue and expense budget for the calendar year 2017 of $38,026,723.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you, Paul. Sewer operating fund, motion to adopt a balanced preliminary sewer operating fund revenue and expense budget for calendar year 2017 of $8,844,000. The proposed budget for the sewer operating fund does include a rate increase in sewer rent charges over the 2017 calendar year, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. 2017 calendar year estimated at $12 per household, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
One in opposition? The motion passes. Continue.
Highway aid fund, motion to adopt a preliminary budget for highway aid fund for the calendar year 2017 in the amount of $1,534,178. These funds are provided by the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation and require no additional funding from the township sources. And I so move.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any comments from Commissioners? Any comments from staff and/or residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Retiree healthcare fund, motion to adopt a balanced preliminary retiree healthcare fund budget for calendar year 2017 in the amount of $1,397,290. Monies supporting this fund are contingent upon the passage of a general fund, sewer fund, and refuse fund budgets. Budget includes $200,000 in additional revenue to partially fund OPEB obligations, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any comments from Commissioners? Comments from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Tuition reimbursement fund, motion to adopt a preliminary tuition reimbursement budget for calendar year 2017 in the amount of $15,000 for expense budget and $5,000 in revenue. Difference of $10,000 is funded by principal cash, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Workers' compensation fund, motion to adopt a balanced preliminary workman's compensation budget for calendar year 2017 of $1,728. Difference between revenues and expenses, $280,280 will be funded from reserves. Monies supporting the workman's compensation fund are contingent upon passage of the general fund, sewer fund, and refuse fund budgets, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any comments from Commissioners? Comments from staff? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
And the refuse fund, motion to adopt a balanced preliminary refuse fund revenue and expense budget for calendar year 2017 of $5,782,381. The proposed budget includes no rate increase on residential refuse fees as defined in Chapter 92 of the Code of the Township of Abington, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any comments from Commissioners? Comments from staff? Comments from the public? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
One final comment, President Luker. We do have a tentative budget work session scheduled for next week, should the need arise. I don't think at this point it's necessary. I suggest you might want to cancel that and proceed to final budget adoption on December 15th.
All right. I don't think we have to make a motion on that.
No, it's not necessary.
So if that be the case, the next public meeting will be held on December 15th, December 16th at 7:00 PM at Abington Township Building for adoption of the 2017 budget.
That's correct.
Okay, if there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to close the budget meeting.
So moved.
Okay? Thank you. At this time, I'd like to reopen the floor for our Board of Commissioners meeting for November 10th. And at this time, we have some presentations to make. And the first one, I'd like to call on Commissioner Ben Sanchez for a presentation of commendation to Eagle Scout Michael Hopkins.
Mr. President, Board of Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. Let me introduce to you Mr. Michael Hopkins, who has attained the Boy Scout rank of Eagle Scout. And Michael, I'm going to go ahead and read this. Certificate of Commendation Presented to Michael Hopkins. A proud community salutes you on attaining the Eagle Scout rank in the Boy Scouts of America. In achieving this honor, you have earned assorted merit badges which attest to your leadership qualities and your contribution to our community. Your chosen project was an important undertaking for our surrounding community, and as I've discussed with you, important to me because it is actually at my own place of worship. Your recently completed project resulted in repainting the access ramp railings, two staircases, and all the gates around the Immaculate Conception Church in Jenkentown. The hours you spent organizing and leading a team that dedicated hours to beautify the church will benefit the community for many years. We, the Board of Commissioners, join Boy Scout Troop 304, your family, friends, and fellow troop members in congratulating you on this milestone. Michael, congratulations.
And, Michael, why don't you first introduce, I know your parents are here, introduce them, and then why don't you tell us where you're headed to college this year?
All right, so my mom and dad, couldn't do this without them, Mary and Mike. I live here in Abington, and I actually go to Penn State Abington right now, and will be heading out to Maine campus next year. And I'm glad that I could become an Eagle Scout and make my township proud. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael, and to the parents of Michael, thank you for being here, and Commissioner Sanchez, thank you. At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Tom Bowman to present a commendation to Eagle Scout Desmond James White.
Desmond, come on up here, please. Desmond, we're here as the Commissioners and staff and the assembled audience. I'd like you to welcome Desmond James White, known as Desi White, resident of Roslyn. He's here with his mom, Terry, and his grandfather, Chuck. And Desi has also achieved the proud Eagle Scout rank. I'd like to read you this certificate commendation if I could. "A proud and grateful Abington Township salutes you on attaining the Eagle Scout rank in the Boy Scouts of America. In achieving this honor, you have earned assorted merit badges which attest to your leadership qualities and your contribution to our community. Your chosen project was an important undertaking for Abington Township. The hours you spent in organizing and leading your team and dedicated hours enhancing Veterans Grove at Roslyn Park by installing a bench, a boulder, and dedication plaque, a Veterans Grove sign to the entrance of the park, and improve the conditions for neighbors and residents to enjoy is a testament to your community spirit. We, the Board of Commissioners, join your family, friends, and fellow members of Troop One in congratulating you on this milestone. We wish you continuing success and further fulfillment in the years to come." And Desi is a ninth grader at LaSalle High School, and certainly we in Roslyn are thankful for the project. We'll be seeing her tomorrow at a service for the veterans at 4:15 at that location. Everyone's welcome to join us. And Desi, without further ado, congratulations.
I'm here with my mom and my grandfather. They've supported me my whole life. I just started my freshman year at LaSalle, like Mr. Bowman said, and I couldn't be anywhere I am without my mom and my grandfather. Eagle Scout, my fourth grade.
Thank you, Desmond, and thank you to your grandparents, I believe you mentioned, grandpop?
Grandpop.
Thank you. At this time, we have a Eagle presentation to Eagle Scout Otis McCullough, but Commissioner Farron is running a little late, so if the parents or family who are here for Otis would just bear with us a few more minutes, we'd like to move forward to a swearing-in of a new fire chief. And at this time, I'd like to call on the Honorable Justice Juanita Price.
Thank you, Commissioner. We've just recently had a change in leadership at McKinley Fire Company. I'd like to call Sean Phillipsen. As established by ordinance, the district fire chiefs take oath of office upon appointment. Each chief is tasked with the operation of their fire company and responding units, toll fire calls within their district, and are also provided through police powers on those emergency incidents, to shut down roadways, and to handle those emergencies. So I would ask the Honorable Judge Juanita Price to issue the oath of office to new McKinley Fire Company Chief Sean Phillipsen.
I am the due state and name declare.
Ms. Phillipsen.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution and the laws.
The Constitution and the laws.
Of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws.
And the Township of Abington.
And the Township of Abington.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As chief of McKinley Fire Company.
As chief of McKinley Fire Company.
And will obey and enforce the rules.
And will obey and enforce the rules.
Regulations and policies.
Regulations and policies.
Governing the Fire Department of Abington Township.
Governing the Fire Department of Abington Township.
As set forth in the Township Ordinance.
Chief Sean, would you like to introduce any family members who are here this evening?
Actually, my family wasn't able to make it this evening, but being in the volunteer service, your family also becomes the fellow firefighters that you run with. So all these gentlemen right here.
That's your family, extended family.
Extended family.
Thank you, and congratulations to Chief Sean. How do you pronounce that? Phillipsen?
Phillipsen.
Okay, thank you. I was neglectful in announcing that Assistant Fire Marshal John Rohr would be doing the presentation, so I turn it back over to you, Chief Marshal Rohr, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Commissioner. I would ask for Fire Service Administrator Dave Tramp with some presentations on some recent graduates.
The Abington Township Fire Department recently developed a new recruitment and awareness -- is the sound on also?
Yeah.
The Abington Township.
Third time's the charm.
Sorry again. The Abington Township Fire Department recently developed a new video that we will show at various recruitment events and community activities. The video lasts five minutes. I thought we would introduce it to you tonight. I hope you enjoy it.
It's definitely not the situation. It's more of a training and being prepared for those chaotic situations such as vehicle rescues, building fires, things of that nature. It's a lot of training, prep work, and being prepared for that and building your skills to be prepared for those events.
Honestly, I thought the Fire Department in Abington as a whole, as well as Walden, was a paid service. I never knew it was volunteer, because I'm not native to Abington.
Abington Township Fire Department is one of the only volunteer fire departments that has the state accreditation, so we meet the highest of standards of any volunteer fire department around.
We are able to do a completely volunteer department that saves the taxpayers a substantial amount of money with the man-hours that the volunteers put in the community.
For some fire departments, they do like shift work, where you stay within the station, you volunteer for a certain amount of time every week or every month or whatever it is. For Abington Township Fire Department, you just respond when there's a call. We have all our scheduled meetings, scheduled trainings, and things like that. But as for a schedule for fighting fires, it doesn't exist, and that's part of the excitement of it.
The community is diverse for firefighters because we have pretty much every aspect. We have single-family dwellings, twins, townhomes, high-rises. It's not flat, so there is some terrain to it, which has some rescue aspect to it. There's thoroughfares, there's back roads, wooded areas, so it's kind of incorporate everything that you learned in the fire service kind of in this one area.
You don't see that too much around the area where you have five companies in one township, and when we get hit out for like a working fire, I mean, usually all five companies go to work, and you know, we work very well together. There's a lot of communication between the five chiefs, and all five companies work together. We get along very well with our police departments and our EMS.
We train all year round. We don't stop. It's normally weekly per company.
So you normally start with FF1, which is firefighter one, which basically gives you an introduction to firefighting. In our particular township, that allows basically the fundamentals to, you know, basically be able to ride the truck to go into a burning building, get signed off by your chief. We learn here that, you know, if you learn something, learning it once isn't good enough. You have to be able to perform that task under pressure, maybe at a time of day where you're not like on your toes, so kind of just practice, 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 and it's something that we basically preach in the Fire Department here.
No matter what training you can think of, it pretty much can be done at our training facility.
We have a special operation training prop that's actually pretty cool. We have our building that we can burn in, gives us options that we can go up to a third floor. It's just a great place to be. The Fire Departments are awesome, we all work together.
We have a close-knit family kind of in-house, as well as you know guys from different departments, you know, and everybody kind of gets along, and even if you don't know people, just when the departments come together, you pull up to an incident, everybody's kind of working as one team.
It's like a social club. You come in here, you meet all kinds of new people, great people, and you really look forward to coming down to the firehouse.
So when junior firefighters sign up, they do have a lot of commitment for somebody who is 16 or 17 years old, and there are parents that kind of hesitant about letting their child become a firefighter. The more time the kid gives, the more the parents are a little bit more comfortable with the guys. We welcome parents to come down here, ask us questions, see how we're doing, see how we're keeping their child safe. They're welcome to look at the training, you know, all the safety procedures that we set forth that will guarantee that their child is doing the job as safely as possible.
It's a great community. It's very diverse. There's a lot of things to offer for families. There's a lot of day camps, there's a lot of soccer camps, there's a lot to offer here. Our chief does drills with the children, we have handouts for the family, we just try to make it interesting for the kids.
It builds responsibility, structure, a sense of pride. I wouldn't be where I was at in my life if I didn't have people that helped me, so this is my way of kind of giving back to that. I mean, I'm blessed to be in a very good situation with my family, and this helps, you know, other people potentially be in that same situation.
You never know who you're going to find. I mean, I found my husband firefighting. It's a very nice place to be, and it's nice to meet different people and see how everybody trains.
That's a short summary of what your volunteer fire department does for the community. All of the footage in that video, incidentally, was taken at actual events, there was no canned stuff in there. So we thought that that video would lead nicely into tonight's program where we're going to honor our recent graduates of our firefighter one program.
Dave, one quick question.
Yes.
Is that video on YouTube?
It will be.
Okay.
It'll be on our --
Can you let us know when that is?
Yeah, it'll be on there tomorrow. I wanted to show it here first, so you've seen it first, and it'll be on our website, abingtonfd.org, and on the website, abingtonfd.org is our Facebook page, and the video will be on our Facebook page.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Okay, thank you for that. John, do you have any other comments to wrap up this presentation?
Commissioner, today we're going to present the presentations to the graduates right now.
Okay.
Before we begin, I wanted to acknowledge our fire training coordinator, who's responsible for putting together all of our training programs. And as you could see from the video, fire training i-is a major part of what is necessary to do in a volunteer fire company. Our injury rate is very low, and that's a function of good equipment, good training, and good leadership. Larry's right here. Larry Sifkin, our fire training coordinator. Now, incidentally, fire training was a major component of our recent improvement in our insurance services, ISO rating. So, again, to Larry's credit, the fire training program was part of the reason that we were able to improve our ISO rating to a Class III. Jeff Glenn, our community service specialist, is the lead instructor in the firefighter-one programs, responsible for administering it, having the facilities ready, have the instruction ready, have the equipment ready, and so forth. So, we're ready to begin. I would ask Commissioner Schreiber to come down and join us over here.
Thank you.
As I call the students' names, would you come up and join Larry, Jeff, and Commissioner Schreiber? Did you want to read the commendation?
They're all going to say the same thing. So, what they say is, "You are hereby awarded this certificate of commendation to recognize your considerable efforts in completing 196 hours of basic fire training as prescribed by the National Fire Protection Association in support of the mission of the Abington Township Fire Department to provide excellent fire and rescue services to the community."
Thank you.
All right, first is George Stevenson from Abington Fire Company. George? Zachary Luss from McKinley Fire Company. Joseph Campbell from Weldon Fire Company. Thomas Popper from Weldon Fire Company. Alexander Wilson from Weldon Fire Company. Stephanie Belli from Roslin Fire Company. Kevin Bryson from Roslin Fire Company. Leyla Oda Bosch. From Roslin Fire Company. Thank you.
Did you want to get a group photo of?
Yeah, we'll take, we'll do that downstairs.
Okay. All right, so, congratulations to all the new firefighters. Any comments from Fr- Mr. Glenn, did you want to say something?
Yeah, just one quick thing. What you see here is the future of the Abington Township Fire Department. All right, they worked extremely hard. We started the program in the end of February, and they didn't graduate until June. All right, they come two nights a week and Sundays. They do four-hour modules, one each night, and they do two four-hour modules on Sundays. So, they're away from their family, they're away from what they do for a living. They come down to participate. I'm always glad when these programs finish up because it's so rewarding for me as a PA State Fire Instructor to see what we can mold people that have never done anything with fire and what they do at the end when they're all finished up. So, these folks here did a lot of work, and I thank the departments, the five companies here in the township, for the support I get when I do these programs. We're going to do another one in the spring again. Anything I need, any apparatus I need, and it's all made available for me, so I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Oh, excuse me, excuse me, before you leave. Excuse me, can I just say? I just, all of you, we are so thankful that we have volunteers that step forward to protect us all when there's a fire, so thank you so much. Pass that on to all the other volunteers that aren't here. Thank you and congratulations.
I think we all echo those sentiments. Thank you, Commissioner Gillespie. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We'll just pause for a moment as we allow the firefighters to exit the room. Commissioner Farron, we were going to see if you could come on next. Chief Kelly, do you mind?
No, of course not.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, John. Now, we'd like to go back to the commendation to Eagle Scout Otis McCullough and call on Commissioner Tom Farron.
Thank you, President Luker. Thank you, Manager LeFever. Thank you, everybody. Very excited to do this. Every time we have the opportunity to welcome an Eagle Scout here, it's almost humbling, right, to know that they have the wherewithal to start a project, carry through to fruition, and really just impact the community in such a positive way. It's very humbling, especially, how old are you?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. I wasn't doing this at eighteen years old, and it's a great example for me to go home to my children, who are ten, nine, seven, and five, to talk about the great things that we have going on in our township. And I would imagine that the characteristics that Otis has displayed here are probably evident in many of the firefighters, our police personnel, our emergency service personnel, so tonight's a good night to be doing this and, you know, recognizing Otis. So, Raymond Otis McCullough, "A proud community salutes you in attaining the Eagle Scout rank in the Boy Scouts of America. You have earned assorted merit badges, which attest to your leadership qualities and your contribution to our community. Your chosen project was a good example of the good our Abington Township residents performed for the larger community. You coordinated with St. Luke the Evangelist Church to improve the conditions of the attached playground used by many schoolchildren and neighborhood children. Over several visits, you performed needed landscaping, such as ripping out and removing two large evergreen bushes, cutting down a tree, and planting ground cover. You also assisted with some structural upkeep, fixing a leaky gutter and staining the surrounding fence. Your work has provided to neighborhood children a cleaner and safer playground. Your three years of active participation in scouting has prepared you to contribute to society in a selfless, meaningful, and productive way, and is indicative of your character and service to the community. We, the Board of Commissioners, join Boy Scout Troop 304, your family, friends, and fellow troop members in extending our congratulations to you this tenth day of November 2016. Congratulations."
I'm here with my parents. I would just like to say thank you to them, because they helped me a lot. Also, my fellow scout, Mike Hopkins, is here, and I didn't know he was going to be here, but he also helped me a lot through scouting, as did Mike Hopkins' parents. Mr. Hopkins, he drove me on some trips and everything, so I'd just say thank you to them, and I probably wouldn't be here without them all, so, yeah, thank you to my mom, my dad, and Mr. Hopkins, and Mike Hopkins.
Thank you, Otis, and thank you to his family, and also to you, Commissioner Tom Farron. At this time, I'd like to turn the program over to Chief Bill Kelly for presentations.
Mr. President, members of the board, we have several commendations to give out tonight, and for tonight's program, I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Chief John Livingood, who will do the presentations for the board.
Thank you, Chief Kelly, Mr. President, members of the Board of Commissioners. We have a couple of commendations that we're going to do tonight that are a little bit unusual, but let me just read you the story behind what happened here, and then it'll make more sense. February 2015, Abington and Lower Moreland began to experience a rash of residential burglaries, all having similar methods and traits. Abington burglaries occurred in the Morden, London Dairy, and Lenore Road areas. All of the burglaries were happening within the first few hours of darkness. Suspects were targeting high-end homes, forcing entry into the home, and if an alarm was activated, would go immediately to the master bedroom, steal jewelry, and flee the area before the police could arrive. If an alarm was not activated, there would be heavy ransacking throughout the house. This MO matched that of Stephen White, a career burglar who had ravaged this community with residential burglaries in the 1990s and into the early 2000s. White was arrested by Abington Police in 2004 and was released from prison in 2014. During a Lower Moreland burglary, the burglars brought their own ladder. What they used it for was to climb to the second floor to enter the home through an upstairs window, thereby not activating the alarm, which only covered the first floor of the home. As a result of these burglaries, a task force was set up under the command of Detective Sergeant Steve Fink. Sergeant Fink was very familiar with Stephen White and his group, and was able to rely on his experience and training to predict the areas and times that he might strike next. The task force gathered intelligence and deployed officers in the affected areas on a nightly basis. Detective Sergeant Steve Fink worked on the task force himself every single night. He ensured the officers were assigned, had the latest intelligence, all the equipment and tools that they needed. He also made sure that the rest of the department was briefed and aware of what the task force was doing and what was going on out there. Abington Police worked closely with Lower Moreland Police, Detective Carl Maltz. The task force gathered intelligence, deployed officers in the affected area on a nightly basis. This activity tends to become very monotonous. It is very common to be assigned to one of these surveillance posts night after night, no activity occurring, and it's very easy to become very complacent. On Saturday, March 21, 2015, Officer Dan Bullock of the Abington Police was assigned to work with the burglary task force. Officer Bullock was assigned one of those surveillance posts. He remained vigilant, he was alert, and around 8:30 that night, Officer Bullock observed a suspicious vehicle. He started to follow it, alerted the other task force officers. At one point, it became very obvious that the occupants were casing homes for a burglary. Task force officers watched as one of the occupants even got out of the car and crept around several darkened homes in Lower Moreland Township, looking in the windows of the homes, which were in complete darkness. When it appeared that the occupants of the suspicious car became aware of the police surveillance, the officers pulled over and stopped the vehicle. Also, inside the car was career burglar, once again, Stephen White. He was laying down so not to be observed in the car, so it would only appear like there was one person operating the car. Also, inside the car, there was a ladder, very similar to the one used in the Lower Moreland burglary, as well as pry bar, gloves, cell phones, ski masks, and dog mace. White and the other occupant were arrested. Early the next morning, detectives executed several search lines in Philadelphia, including at the apartment where White was residing. Property stolen from one of the burglaries, including a handgun, was found inside the apartment. The other occupant of the car turned out to be a violent, wanted criminal who was turned over to the appropriate federal authorities. Stephen White was arrested, but the work was only just beginning. Detective Maltz and Detective Sergeant Fink worked under the guidance of Montgomery County Assistant District Attorney Lauren McNulty, preparing the case for trial. Many hours were spent gathering evidence, reviewing cellphone records, interviewing witnesses, and I can tell you, I came in here one Sunday afternoon to pick up some paperwork, boom, they're in the office, off-duty, working, hammered away on this case, just relentless in the preparation. In months leading up to the trial, White filed countless pre-trial motions in an effort to have his charges dropped or reduced. ADA McNulty, being aware of the dangers that White posed to the community, did not waver, but instead prepared an aggressive prosecution of this criminal, career criminal. In May of 2016, a four-day jury trial took place on Montgomery County Court, again led by ADA Lauren McNulty. The Commonwealth presented an excellent case. The jury found White guilty of most charges, and he was subsequently sentenced to nine to 20 years in state penitentiary. Tonight, we have with us, I'd like to call up in front of the room Detective Sergeant Steve Fink, Officer Dan Bullock. Commissioner Schreiber, would you please join us down here? Hand it up to the Commissioner. For these two officers, we have Class III department commendations, and our rules and regulations require that these level commendations be presented in front of the Board of Commissioners.
So, this one's to Officer Daniel Bullock for your hard work and dedication to the Abington Lower Moreland burglary task force, which led to the arrest and conviction of a career criminal and the clearance of eight high-end residential burglaries. The second one is to Detective Sergeant Stephen Fink, and I believe it says something slightly different, "For your participation as lead investigator with the Abington Lower Moreland burglary task force, which resulted in the clearance of eight high-end residential burglaries, along with the arrest of a career criminal and a violent, wanted criminal."
I'd like to have Dan Bullock, Dan's up here. Let's see, Carl Maltz, will you please join us? And ADA Lauren McNulty. This is Detective Carl Maltz, Lower Moreland Police Department, who we mentioned in there, and we'd like to present him with his plaque as well.
Detective Carl Maltz, "For your hard work and dedication to the Abington Lower Moreland burglary task force, which led to the arrest and conviction of a career criminal and the clearance of eight high-end residential burglaries." And last but not least, presented to Montgomery County Assistant District Attorney Lauren McNulty, in recognition of your outstanding performance, dedication, and hard work in the investigation and successful prosecution of a career burglar, I'm sorry, of a career burglar, Stephen White, which made Abington Township and Montgomery County a safer place to live.
Ladies and gentlemen, these are the people that were responsible for that conviction, putting them away. Could not be done without the four people who see standing here in front of you. I'd also like to introduce ADA Tom McGoldrick, Chief of Trials, Montgomery County, here, representing District Attorney Kevin Steele, and Detective Sergeant Dave Sharada, representing Lower Moreland Police Chief Pete Hassan.
Congratulations, on behalf of the Abington Township Board of Commissioners, to all those who received citations this evening. Chief Kelly, did you want to roll right into the next presentation, is there one? Or is all presented in the one?
That's all we have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Deputy Chief Livinggood, thank you very much, and thank you to all who attended. At this time, I'd like to get approval of the minutes, and I would like to call on Vice President Stephen Klein.
Thank you, President Luker. I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for the Board of Commissioners meeting of October 13th, 2016.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners, staff, or audience? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. At this time, we open the floor for public comment, and public comment on only agenda items being voted on this evening, and I ask that you adhere to the three-minute speaking time limit if you are called upon to speak, or if you want to come to the podium and speak at this time. If you do, please state your name and address for the record.
Laura Lehman, 1431 Bryant Lane, does that include budget items and agenda items? Just agenda items? You'll call separately for...
Budget's already been...
They already did the budget.
The budget's complete, so it's on agenda items that are on for vote this evening.
All right, so, well, first of all, the last meeting you talked about, in the committee meetings, you talked about that you had streamlined your meetings and that you now could have them all on one night. So let me tell you how you streamlined them. You took out the public comment...
I don't... Is this... What you're talking on?
You can make that comment at the end of the meeting.
Right.
What's that?
What you're asking, what you're talking about is not an agenda item, per se.
It's not an agenda item? You had it at the committee meetings, on the agenda or not?
Well...
Okay, I mean, this kind of nonsense is ridiculous. Just let me make my comments, okay? And don't play games with... If you have so little time to hear what our actual comments are, please don't play games with exactly where they belong and we can't say them here or there.
Ms. Lehman, just move to your point, please. Go ahead.
Okay, so I would like to make some cogent comments about that particular issue, okay? I didn't know it wasn't on the agenda, it was on the committee meeting agenda, and generally those items are on the Board of Commissioners' agenda.
It was not an agenda item, it was a suggestion made for, and it was going to be put on the agenda for next month.
Okay, so I made a mistake, and you spent more time pointing out the mistake and trying to redirect me and interrupt my thoughts than just hearing the comments for a minute.
So therefore, move to the next item you were going to discuss. Thank you.
Okay. Extremely frustrating, and that is the problem. The problem is there are so many items and so little time to discuss any of them, including with that kind of interruptions. So the development at the corner of York Road, I assume, is on there, okay? So some comments were made last time about paying attention to the citizens' cost on these kinds of things. I'm trying to understand why we're getting, as a township, into development. That job of, I understand the intersection needed to be fixed, I'm glad you did. It was a dangerous corner, and for years it needed to be fixed, so that's important to do. The economic development, though, combined with that, is coming, that kind of stuff is going to come right out of citizens' pockets, and it shouldn't be. It should be in the pockets of the developers who profit from it, and not from taxpayer dollars. And in the vacant properties, we're talking about, we were talking first about blighted properties, and we gave them tax abatements so that people are paying for blighted properties. Then we went from that into developing the blighted properties, purchasing them and developing them. This is not the job of a government to do. You're becoming developers, and our tax dollars are what's at risk because they're unlimited to you. You can have as many of them as you want, and that shouldn't happen. So I would like you very much to consider the cost of what you're doing. Jackson Park needs a sign. I don't know if it's on the agenda or not, okay? You put up a sign, a big green sign, "We've been asking forever to have a directional, a nice, nature-oriented directional sign that would tell us where to park and where the entrance to the park is." Still isn't there, but now this lovely neighborhood has two gigantic green and white signs that looks like the Turnpike, okay, that say Jackson Park and point to the sign that says Jackson Park. Doesn't make any sense, it was a waste of money, and we still don't know where to park and where the entrance is, okay? So I have some other comments, those I assume are not on the agenda, and budget items, you're going to call for separately for comments for that?
Budget's complete. December the 15th, I believe, is the final budget item.
Oh, so you're not doing budget tonight?
We did.
It's already done. Seven o'clock.
Oh, I missed it, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? If not, we'll move right to our first...
May I ask, since I did not know it was at seven o'clock, may I ask to make two very quick budget remarks?
You can do that at the end of the meeting, then. Thank you. Public Works, I'd like to call on Commissioner Tom Heckrich, Director.
Thank you, President Luker. Public Works Committee has one item of business this evening, and that is PW-1, and this is a motion to approve Resolution Number 16-031, authorizing the President of the Board of Commissioners and the Township Secretary to execute an environmental stewardship and watershed protection grant agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
President Luker, that concludes our business.
Thank you, Commissioner Heckrich. Commissioner Sanchez, Director of the Code Enforcement and Development Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had one item, CE-1, but that was canceled, so the committee has no business for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Sanchez. At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Lori Schreiber, Director of Public Safety.
Thank you, President Luker. PS-1 is a motion to adopt ordinance number 2127, amending Chapter 156, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 2, Traffic Regulations, Section 14, Stop Intersections, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any comments from staff or public? I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
PS-2 is a motion to advertise ordinance number 2128, amending Chapter 156, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 2, Traffic Regulations, Section 14, Stop Intersections, and Article 3, Parking Regulations, Section 25, Parking Prohibited at All Times, No Parking Between Signs, No Parking Here at a Corner, Parking Prohibited Except Certain Hours, No Stopping or Standing, for adoption at the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Commissioners on December 8th, 2016, at 7:30 PM, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners or staff? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And that concludes our agenda this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Schreiber. At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner John Spiegelman, Director of Public Affairs.
Thank you very much, President Luker. Because of the first three of our four items tonight concerning the Old York-Susquehanna Project, I would just like to briefly address some incorrect information that was made in the comment to the Speaker. The properties being acquired are not being acquired for the township to develop. That property is to be demolished in order to straighten the roads, in order to actually do the roadwork, so the township is not, in that regard, getting into the development business. That said, we're going to begin with PA-1. This is Multimodal Transportation Fund Program, DCED Grant Award Acceptance Request. This is a motion to accept the Multimodal Transportation Fund grant from the Department of Community and Economic Development in the amount of $812,486 to support the Old York Road-Susquehanna Road project, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item PA-2, related, this is a motion to accept the Multimodal Transportation Fund Program grant from PennDOT in the amount of $588,153 for improvements to the intersection of Old York and Susquehanna Roads, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And item PA-3, this is a motion to authorize a cooperation agreement, an intergovernmental cooperation agreement, to partner with the Montgomery County Redevelopment Authority for the Old York Road-Susquehanna Road project, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
And our final agenda item tonight is Resolution Number 16-030 for PICO Green Region Grant for Jackson Park. This is a motion to approve Resolution Number 16-030, which authorizes the Bureau of Parks and Recreation to make application to the Natural Lands Trust for the 2016 PICO Green Region Grant in the amount of $8,000. The funding will be used for the removal of invasive vegetation in Jackson Park, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Mr. President, this concludes our Public Affairs agenda for tonight, and I just want to briefly thank the Board very much for your support of the Old York Road-Susquehanna Road project.
Thank you. Please remind me to make comments before we start the next meeting to turn off all electronic devices. Thank you. At this time, we move to the Finance Committee, and I ask Vice President Stephen Klein, Director, to the seat.
Thank you, President Luker. The Treasurer's Report is available in the Township Manager's Office or the Township Treasurer's Office for the public's review. Treasurywoman Paul is not here tonight. Start with FC-1, Investments. Motion to approve investments for the month of September as previously circulated to the Board. It was noted that investments for the month totaled $1,948,000. Interest rates yields ranged from 0.8% to 1%, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
FC-2, Motion to A, approve the September expenditures as previously circulated to the Board in the amount of $3,815,666 and 57 cents, and salaries and wages in the amount of $2,747,178.91. And B, authorize the proper officials to sign vouchers in the payment of bills and contracts as they mature through the month of December 2016.
Second.
You didn't say I so move.
It's been moved and seconded. May I have a roll call, please?
You can't confuse us like this, Stephen.
Yes.
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 Yes. FC-3, Motion to approve the advance and travel expense activity for September 2016 as previously circulated to the Board. Advance and travel expense reports are $0 and $6,457.16, respectively. Nine-month expense total, $35,888.83, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
FC-4, Motion to approve the clearing fund and deferred revenue expense activity and petty cash balances for month of September as previously circulated to the Board. Clearing fund receipts and disbursements for the month of September 2016 were $918.61 and $16, respectively. Deferred revenue expense receipts and disbursements for the month of September 2016 were $451,433.30 and $436,875.96, respectively, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
And that completes the Finance Committee agenda for the month.
Thank you, Vice President Klein. At this time, we open the floor for public comment on items not on the agenda. Any township-related issues you want to speak on? Again, please observe the three-minute speaking limit and name and address for the record. Sir.
Raymond Bell, 2076 Parkview Avenue. Tomorrow is a recognition of Veterans Day. I would like, first of all, to compliment and say thank you to the Police Department, Fire Department, Second Alarmers, and recognize that in this country today, 20 veterans commit suicide a day. Thirty-nine thousand in a given month are homeless. I want to thank the restaurants in the township that have offered a free meal for a veteran tomorrow. For those veterans looking or listening to me, Lowe's and Home Depot offer veterans 10% discounts. You don't normally see that in the stores, but you have to ask. In that matter, I would encourage any veteran to ask any store, any restaurant, if they offer discounts. I will try to make the invite, Commissioner Kalanowski, for tomorrow, and I just want to say, magic number, not a magic number, but I want to recognize Montgomery County Recorder of Deeds, who publishes a listing of those establishments in the county that offer discounts to veterans, and the number of years that I've gotten, as most veterans do, from the Montgomery County Recorder of Deeds to say thank you for your service. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from the public? Thank you, Mr. Bell.
Laura Lehman, 1431 Bryant Lane. So Phase 3 of your redevelopment project, Mr. Spiegelman, I think, knows, is development and redevelopment of the economic area. Phase 1 is the buying of the properties to improve the intersection. Phase 2 is the infrastructure to improve the intersection, and then Phase 3 is about redevelopment of that area for economic development.
And that's what the Montgomery County Redevelopment Authority, so the specific reason we're partnering with them, because this is their wheelhouse, their area of expertise.
Yes, I understand that, but I thought I understood you to say that you weren't redeveloping and that you were just improving the intersection. It's definitely...
This is not a Q and A.
Fine.
My apologies, Mr. President.
And then the second thing that I'd like to mention is that some people who are chairing meetings, one recently speaking, for instance, but not yourself generally, Mr. Luker, Commissioner Luker, is that there is a problem. There is, the rules that we've adopted, unless you changed them when I wasn't looking, were basically to follow Robert's Rules of Order, and there are a couple other changes to that. When the chair is chairing a meeting, I might point this to Mr. Spiegelman particularly, it is important that they remain impartial and not say, yes, I agree with you, I concur, and then go on for half an hour about their own opinion. The chair is supposed to remain impartial, and when they want to speak, they separate themselves from the chair and have someone else take the chair. So I'd like to see that happen because it is affecting the opinions, especially opinions from residents. from residents when they are commented on. The other thing is that you were talking about changing the speaking rules, and there were some comments about how residents have plenty of time to speak. You have heard again and again that they do not. And we had an agenda with something like 20 items on it the other night, and there were three minutes to speak on the agenda items, which is positively ridiculous. It does not allow ample time to speak. So you're streamlining your meetings at the expense of the public hearing what they need to hear about some other opinion other than just your own about what's going on. And you are supposed to be serving the public, so the important thing is for you to hear what the public thinks. Even if it's often just me, I often have talked to many people before I come here. And certainly, other people have different opinions, but you do need to hear from the people that you represent. So I would please ask you not to streamline out, to put back in the speaking items at a Board of Commissioners meeting, so that whatever is decided in committee meeting, then people can come to this meeting knowing what's been discussed and give you the opinion before you vote. So the other thing is Aqua Roads, Mr. Michelos is on vacation, so we didn't get pinned down on the numbers exactly for, I know Aqua and Pico are doing roads, but they may be digging up roads that weren't actually in need of digging up. So I don't know how many miles of road, maybe Mr. LaFever knows, how many miles of road we're doing that actually needed to be done.
Mr. LaFever.
Mr. Michelos did address this question at the committee meeting last week, and I believe he projected next year 19 miles of roadway are scheduled to be done as part of the overlay program in 2017. I don't have an exact percentage, but he did indicate a significant percentage of those roadways were scheduled for repair in the near future. I think he used the estimate three to four years.
Okay, that doesn't tell me how, in other words, a lot of his miles were Aqua miles or Pico miles, so, okay. I'll get that number from him, but I will tell you that our roads in this township are way worse than they have ever been. I was promised in 2010 that our roads were coming up for repaving. They have still not been repaved in 2016, and as you all know, I fell on them walking, after warning you about that. I now am riding my bike on them, and they're so bad that every time I cross one of those cracks, stuff flies out of the basket on my bike. I just went down Pembroke Road, just coming up to Deline, there are giant potholes. I fortunately missed all of them with my bike.
Did you report these to Public Works?
What's that?
Did you report these giant potholes to Public Works?
I have reported these so many times to this particular body, but these roads...
Michael, could you make note of this?
Yeah, these roads are, what's happening is, we are behind in what we used to keep, the condition that we used to keep.
You're up to five minutes now, Ms. Lehman. Move on.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, all right, and then, okay, so and the last thing, and I'm going to report it now too, is so Pembroke coming up to Deline, and Deline coming up to Fox Chase. Both of them have big holes, and they actually do need to be done. And I will leave that for today, but it is a travesty to take away the speaking on individual items when you have that many items on the agenda.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? If not, we'll start with comments from the Commissioners, starting with Commissioner Bowman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just as I mentioned earlier, there will be a commemorative flag lowering tomorrow at Veterans Grove at Roslin Park at 4:15, and everyone is welcome to join us. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Commissioner DePlacido.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of all of Ward 4, we also want to thank and congratulate our new Fire Chief of McKinley, Sean Phillipson, and we'd also like to thank our outgoing chief, Chief Boars, for all of his years of wonderful dedication and service to our community. And when driving through, having complete drive like your kids live here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Farron.
Thank you, President Luker. Just want to congratulate Otis McCullough and our other Eagle Scouts tonight. It's a great achievement to have. Very much appreciated there, working in our township. Congratulate our Fire Department. I'm across the street from the Weld and Fire Department, but I feel like it's part of our ward, and it's amazing the work they do, and we're fortunate to have so many neighbors who spend their time there, so it's very much appreciated. Send good prayers and wishes out to Angelo Ponte Aldofo from our Public Works office as well. And then, a big, big, big thank you to all of our veterans, including my father, my father-in-law, my grandfather-in-law, my grandfather, very much appreciated for everything you've done and continue to do to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Farron. Commissioner Gillespie.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say happy birthday, 241st birthday of the Marine Corps, Semper Fi. My husband was a Marine. I can say was, because he's not with us any longer. Happy birthday to Steve Kalanowski. I didn't know you were born on a Marine Corps birthday. And also...
He's also 244 years old.
Also, congrats, of course, as everyone has said so far, to Sean Phillipson as the new Chief of McKinley Fire Company. And as I said before, we are so lucky to have all these volunteers. And congrats to the police officers who got their awards tonight, and thank you for all they do also.
Thank you. Commissioner Hacker.
Thank you, President Luker. Just a few brief comments. I also wanted to extend gratitude to the veterans in our community on tomorrow's occasion of Veterans Day. Had a chance to talk to a number of the folks out at the polls on Tuesday, and their stories of service are pretty compelling, and we're grateful. I also wanted to mention, I put it in my newsletter last week, our community lost a really important person in the passing of Reverend Brewster Hastings two weeks ago. Brewster Hastings was the pastor at St. Anne's Episcopal Church on Old York Road across from Boston Market. He'd been the pastor of the church since the mid-1990s, and he and his wife Pam Hastings had done some incredible work for the community. And so, the community is in mourning, Pam is in mourning, and we send them our thoughts and prayers. I want to put a plug in for, no pun intended, the electronics recycling event on November 19th. It's 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at Flori Lane, the Township Yards. You can see the Township website for information about the fees associated with recycling televisions, but please come out on the 19th. Briefly, Commissioner Spiegelman and I had a meeting with Manager LaFever and the Engineering Department earlier this week about the upcoming Edgehill Road Bridge Reconstruction Project. We'll have more to say about that in our upcoming newsletters, but the project is slated to begin after Thanksgiving, where the detours will be set up, but the bulk of the work will likely begin in January, so please stay tuned. And finally, happy Thanksgiving to everyone in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kalanowski.
Thanks. Happy birthday to the Marine Corps League, like Carol Gillespie said there. Thank you for your birthday wishes. Tomorrow is Veterans Day, and I'd like to wish the World War II veterans happy Veterans Day, the Korean War veterans happy Veterans Day, the Vietnam War veterans happy Veterans Day, and welcome home. The Gulf War veterans, happy Veterans Day. The Iraqi war and the Afghanistan veterans, happy Veterans Day. All active and non-active members, thank you for your service, and happy Veterans Day.
Thank you, sir. Vice President Klein.
No comment.
Thank you. Commissioners Zepone.
Yeah, I'd like to welcome all Abington Township residents to the 5th Annual ARZI Christmas Tree Lighting Event at the ARZI Community Center at 6:00 PM on Saturday, December the 3rd.
Thank you. Commissioner Spiegelman.
Thank you, President Luker. I'll try not to take half an hour. That doesn't really sound like something I would do, talk half an hour.
Next.
Since Commissioner Hacker took a lot of my items, I actually do want to say that there is, in advance of the Township's electronics collection on the 19th, this Saturday, the 12th, there is an electronics and scrap metal collection happening outside the Keswick Theater. That's Saturday, November 12th, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. So it's most year, anything with a plug, items, no TVs, but also scrap metal. In addition, I do want to just, again, thank everyone for your support of the Old York-Susquehanna Project. It's really been a labor of love for the team that's been working on it. And I would like to say welcome to all our new firefighters, and congratulations to McKinley's excellent new Fire Chief. Finally, echoing the sentiments that so many have shared, and Mr. Bell started, a very happy Veterans Day to all of the veterans in our community. Thank you for serving our country in uniform. Thank you for walking the walk. Thanks to all your families for their sacrifice, and in particular, for those 22 veterans whom we lose to suicide every day, to those suffering from depression, to those suffering heavily from our area's opioid addiction, and that has hit the veterans' community just as depression has very hard. Our thoughts are with you, and we send you strength. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Of course, congratulations to Eagle Scout, newly-minted Eagle Scout, Michael Hopkins, on his achievement. And this is a little belated, but in early October, I had a chance to utilize with some others the training facility, Flori Lane Fire Training Facility, for the Wills for Heroes Program. For those of you that don't know about that, it's a program started by volunteer lawyers in conjunction with my former law firm, and has grown into a foundation to do estate planning documents for first responders and veterans. And we had quite a successful day hosting the event here in Abington Township. It was brought here by a Ward 7 resident, Carolyn Capobianco, who's affiliated with the foundation. I know Officer Ed Quinn helped her out immensely in setting that up, too, and all the, both the Police Department and the Fire Department spread the word among all of their troops to get some people together, and it was great. Cranked out a lot of estate planning documents for some folks. And there will be, I also wanted to thank the law firm of Rudolph Clark, who came up huge in sending volunteer lawyers, who gave up the Saturday, paralegals, really gave us a lot of bodies to help get that done. There's another event in Montgomery County, there was an event right after ours, it took place, but there's another event November 12th at the Willow Grove Firehouse. So if anyone needs that service, feel free to contact me. You do have to sign up online at willsforheroes.org, the foundation website. On a different note, a resident asked me to remind folks that hunting is not permitted in township parks. Apparently, there was some confusion on that in social media, so wanted to remind that. And if you notice any poaching, please call our police department using 911 or the Game Commission, of course, but police probably better and faster. And finally, most of you probably remember from the past, I'm going to be collecting, along with some friends, turkeys for Thanksgiving this year, to be donated to the, well, that's turkeys, canned goods, perishable, non-perishable items. We donate them to the Interfaith Food Cupboard or directly as needed, in coupons or gift cards for any of the above, too, if that's easier. As you know, this got started with, you know, sometimes you do a lot of shopping, but you're going to somebody else's house for the Thanksgiving meal, and you get that turkey voucher, just, you know, you can hand that to me at any time, and I will get it to the right place. This is going to take place on November 20th from 2:00 to 5:00 PM, but a slightly different location this year. We have to do it at Riddle Park this year, which is 1515 The Fairway, but you'll be able to just pull right up, there's an overhang, I'll help you unload, some friends will help me unload, I'm sure many people here will be there, and we will get those things out. Or if you know anyone that needs a meal, again, feel free to contact me. I believe that concludes my items. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Rothman.
Thank you, Commissioner Luker. I'd like to thank everybody in Abington and beyond who came out and voted and participated in the voting process, no matter what side of the aisle you're on. It's something that's so important, and we are clearly well behind on the percentage of people in our country who are participating in voting. So if you have a friend who didn't vote, let them know how important it is to come out next time. I also would like to congratulate Chief Sean, and I'm proud that he's in Ward 3. Look forward to working with him. Thank you all.
Commissioner Myers.
Thank you. Last month, I predicted that the food festival would be fabulous, and I was right. I'd also like to extend my personal congratulations to Lowermoreland Detective Carl Malt, who I have known probably over 40 years. We were in each other's first weddings. Unfortunately, that didn't work out, but we're still good friends. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Markman.
I just want to thank the police force and the people that recognized tonight for shutting down the burglary ring in Ward 2. You know, it's something that a lot of people were worried about, and I think it, you know, taking that person off the street was a great thing for the ward, and they did a great job. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schreiber.
Thank you. Congratulations to all the very many people who got different certificates tonight and the new firefighters, so that was a lot of great stuff happening. In addition, for Thanksgiving, there's a group called Abington Gives Back Thanksgiving who are also collecting canned goods, things for Thanksgiving meals. They have donation boxes, one's in Riviera Pizza, another one's in Beer World in the Roslin area. So if you're interested, they have a Facebook page, Abington Gives Back Thanksgiving. The other thing I want to talk about is we have, I can't believe we're talking about holiday things, but here we go. So, because we don't have another meeting, I don't think, before then, so we're doing things a little bit different in Roslin this year. We are actually going to have a Holiday Block Party. It's going to be Saturday, December 3rd, from 2:00 to 6:00 PM. We have a lot of different activities we're going to have that night. The street's going to be closed off on Bradfield Road from Lafayette to Easton, so it's about a block, an actual block there. And we're going to have a trolley, we're going to have lights contests, so if you're really interested in having your house be part of that, you might want to decorate early this year, so by December 3rd, your whole display is up. We're going to have a choir singing, so we're going to have a holiday sing-along, Santa, there's going to be craft things for kids to do. One of the main things I want to talk about, though, is our Deck the Dogs, an idea that came from Commissioner Myers, so thank you for that. And so if you have a dog that you would like to bring to this Holiday Block Party, dress them up. We're going to have prizes for both the lights contest and the Deck the Dogs, and we're going to have some other surprises there that night. There's going to be food available, and hot chocolate and cookies, but also food, food, because it's going to be right going into the dinner hour. Santa will be there, a lot of different activities. So please come out, again, it's Saturday, December 3rd, from 2:00 to 6:00. Thank you.
Thank you. And in closing, I just want to echo the comments made by Vice President Klein to Manager LaFever, Kevin and Jeanette from the Finance Department, and all the department heads for a fine job on the budget for 2017. Secondly, if I could just ask everyone's indulgence for tomorrow, for Veterans Day, to take a moment to just consider the sacrifices made by the veterans. For years, I think, we had a Korean veteran who just left, Mr. Finnegan, is he still here? Finnegan, I'm sorry, Mr. Finnegan. But it's, a lot of guys have gone through a lot, and he is one, and I asked him to be a good boy tonight, and he was. From one veteran to another, thank you, Mr. Finnegan. And lastly, I just want to extend best wishes for a healthy recovery to Angelo Ponte Aldofo of our Refuge Department staff, and speedy recovery to him. And if there's no further business, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Thank you all for attending.